Whenever you're ready, let me know.
Are we gonna start doing the call numbers?
Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, December 20th, 2021 at 6:30 PM. It's time for the Board of Selectmen meeting. The first thing always is, oh, it's also a joint meeting between the highways and cemetery commissioners and the Dudley Board of Health. I want to say that. And without objection, the Chair and the Board of Selectmen will facilitate the joint meeting. So, the first order of business as always, we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Two, three, public.
For which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd also like to welcome back Mr. Paul Joseph, our Senior Selectman, back on the phones. Good to hear him, for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Of course. All right. Item number two is our consent agenda. We have a couple of items on here. We have the minutes of December 6, 2021. We have a reappointment of Deborah Thibodeau, our MIS Director, with a term to expire 12/31/2022. We have reappointments for 2021, 22 police reserve officers with terms to expire 12/31/22. Officer James Rivera, Officer LaBue Leroux, Officer Paige Moros, Officer John Galwacki, Officer Anthony DiDonato, Officer Elizabeth Weiner. And also a reappointment of the police reserve officer, Eric Gulkin, with the term to expire 6/30/2022. Oh, and we also have lots of our annual licenses for alcohol and other things. Board members.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Sullivan.
Make a motion to dispense with the reading of the, all the licenses, just include it on the record on our published agenda for public viewing.
Second. Motion by Mr. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Johnson. Discussion on that? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oh, wait. We need a call on the phone. Roll call vote, please.
Stephen Sullivan, aye.
J. Johnson, aye.
Paul Joseph, aye.
Kerry Sigunovich, aye.
John Marcy, aye. Yes. And the rest of the contents, consent agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Sullivan.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Mr. Sullivan.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sigunovich. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor? Roll call vote, please.
Stephen Sullivan, aye.
Kerry Sigunovich, aye.
Paul Joseph, aye.
John Marcy, aye. Thank you, guys. Let's go down to lots of that. We have signed, or will be signing, all those licenses for our businesses to come and get. Item three is the Town Administrator's Report. Mr. Ruda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A budget memo for me will be going out this week so that department draft budgets for upcoming fiscal year are received by the third week in January, per the town's bylaws. We can expect the memo to contain conservative guidance to department heads when drafting next year's budget request. We're not yet realizing any significant increase in revenue from multiple large projects in town, including three host community agreements. A 55 and older community proposed permanent dorm at Nichols College, the Amoresco Project, the Stevens Mill Project, Truman Drive Project. And we recently had an additional restaurant open up in town. But we do have a very positive outlook. But as we've always maintained, we need to budget to what we know and not to what we think is going to happen. So, it's going to be another conservative budget memo coming out. Another area of focus in the budget memo will be a focus on regulatory and compliance, employer retention, and grant and project design. And also, of course, maintaining sufficient public safety and public health funding, and a plan to replenish our stabilization fund. So, that memo will be going out probably by the end of next week to have all those draft budgets submitted to my office and the town accountant by the end of January.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Joseph.
For the sake of the public, could the town administrator name the restaurant and its general location?
It's, the restaurant I was referring to, we recently had a turnover of a restaurant, which is called, it's, you guys have been and said that I should know.
Whiskey Rocks?
Uh, no.
Opposed. Uh, no, Upside.
Upside.
Upside. And I always forget if it's Upside or Outpost, so we go, that's why I specifically asked the question. I heard it's very good. And the one that I was referring to is Whiskey Rocks, right there in the Park and Shop Plaza. And that's scheduled to open next week and will be open for New Year's Eve.
Thank you.
An update on the water testing that occurred at our landfill, our cap landfill. As the Board is aware, five private wells in the Eagle Drive neighborhood abutting the landfill were tested after groundwater test wells on the cap landfill tested high for dioxide and PFAS. The test results came back last week showing that of the five private wells that we tested, all came back well within the limits of the established limit by DEP, and all the water is safe to drink in those private wells. However, the investigation will continue, including sampling and testing around our town's former landfill, and we're working directly with the DEP to address the next steps in further testing. And then finally, my last item is surrounding a call that we, and all the surrounding towns had with Harrington Hospital last week. And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to reserve the remainder of that time to discuss that issue during the Board of Health section, which is a little further down on our agenda tonight.
Well, do. So, can we go back to the PFAS thing? So, is that matter going to be closed now? Or are we still going to, for as far as those areas that were tested?
So, we're gonna continue to work with the DEP and seek their guidance and advice as to how to best address the situation. And, you know, testing will continue in and around the area until the DEP is satisfied with the results and any mitigation that we have to take at the cap landfill.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Sullivan.
The circle of testing is not expanding. We've done beyond what was supposed to anyway, right?
We did beyond what we were supposed to. When, you know, when, we've spoken again to our engineers and DEP. We'll determine if we're gonna expand the testing, or if we're good with it. My guess is that we'll probably expand it a little bit to be on the safe side, and continue to sample the area to make sure everything is safe, all the water is safe, and hasn't been impacted by the results of the cap landfill. But so far, so good. We got five test results back, and the water comes back well within the limits.
So, if somebody wants to see those results, we tell them to go to a DEP website for that, or the Board of Health publish it?
The DEP has it on their website.
Okay.
UMass.gov slash DEP.
I guess my point is, in a nutshell, to reduce some of the hysteria, probably wrong word, the results came in well, well below accepted standard, right?
They did.
Okay. Thank you. All this hysteria is a serious matter.
So, the way it works is they start at the five, the five addresses that are closest, Mr. Chairman, to the cap landfill, and they make a determination whether or not to expand from there.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ruda. Any questions for the Town Administrator?
Motion to accept this report as presented.
Motion by Mr. Sullivan.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sigunovich. Roll call vote, please.
Stephen Sullivan, aye.
Kerry Sigunovich, aye.
J. Johnson, aye.
Paul, Paul Joseph, aye.
John Marcy, aye. Unanimous. All right. Item four, citizens' comments. Is there anybody in the audience here who would like to speak on something that's not currently on tonight's agenda? Seeing none. Go on. Okay. Up to five. Licenses and permits. 5A, Henry and Zosha Zidlick. Henry Sales and Service, request to change maximum number of vehicles from eight vehicles to 13 vehicles. We tabled this from our last meeting. Mr. Sullivan.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, it was tabled, kind of my request, I think. Like, we wanted a updated letter from the building inspector, and Michelle, our administrative assistant, made sure we have that. And I think that was the only outstanding issue.
Which we now have.
I believe he's outspoken, the police chief.
And the police chief as well.
It's 13, not 15, because he's renting two spaces to Mr. Nassif, right?
Yeah.
Jack Nassif, okay.
I'm satisfied, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions on this? All right. What's the Board's pleasure?
Uh, Mr. Chair, go back to the agenda. Mr. Chair, we have the request for Henry Sales and Service to change the maximum number of vehicles from eight to 13 at the location on Schofield.
Second. Motion by Mr. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Johnson. Any other discussion? None. Roll call vote, please.
Stephen Sullivan, aye.
J. Johnson, aye.
Paul Joseph, aye.
Kerry Sigunovich, aye.
John Marcy, aye. Unanimous. Thank you, guys. And 5B, the Polish National Alliance of Dudley. It does business as PNA, with 14 West Main Street. They're asking for a change of officer director. There's a new officer, Anna Agathos, replacing Felicita Harvey. And they're here. Would you like to come up, please, and talk about that?
Yes.
And there, you can have a seat and just state your name for the record, please.
Anna. Anna Agathos.
Hi, Anna.
James Madden, bar manager.
Hi, James. Good to see you again. And you guys would like to change to you?
Yes.
From Ms. Harvey. Okay. And, Michelle, do we have all the paperwork?
Everything's awesome.
Okay. How's it going down there? Tell us about, business been good?
Very, very good, yeah.
Glad to hear that.
Yeah.
Glad to hear. Excellent. Anybody have any questions for them?
No, Mr. Chair, just.
Mr. Sullivan.
Again, we mentioned it, 88th was in last week. PNA has been there many, many years. Very, very minimal of any problems. Run a good ship down there. And since I've been on the board, everybody they brought forward to be a director and manager, they do a good job. And I know the chief appreciates it, and we do too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Awesome, guys. What's the Board's pleasure? Mr. Johnson.
Make a motion to accept the change of officer director for the Polish National Alliance of Dudley.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Mr. Sigunovich. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
J. Johnson, aye.
Kerry Sigunovich, aye.
Paul Joseph, aye.
Stephen Sullivan, aye.
John Marcy, aye. Unanimous. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll get all that signed for you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
See ya. All right.
You know.
All right, we'll sign that. And then we'll move on to item six. It's new business. And we're going to, with the, without objection from the Board, we'd like to take one, item 6C, out of order to do first. And that is the appointment of another full-time police officer, Officer Paige Moros. Chief, and Paige, would you like to come up, please? Chief?
Always difficult to fit in these chairs sometimes like this, but thank you. Yes, Mr. Chairman, as you, as you know, the Board had appointed, or is in the process of finalizing the appointment of Merrick Calowas to our lieutenant, which opened up a position within the Department. So, we've had a list active for two years, and the two remaining people on it are Paige and Elizabeth. And so, I had my supervisory staff review everything, go over everything that we've had on the list, and it was unanimous recommendation to provide to your Board the name of Paige Moros for a full-time appointment. Very excited about this because, as you know, we haven't had a full-time female officer for almost nine years. And it was Sergeant Van Daniels. She retired, I believe, in 2012. And she worked part-time for us for about three years until she passed away. So, it's, it's been something we've been trying for a long time to get a female officer back on board. And Paige is a lifelong town resident. She's worked for us for several years, really done a great job. And she currently serves as one of the full-time dispatchers over in the Regional Dispatch Center. So, she's very, very well-versed with everything there. So, I have nothing but good things to say about Paige, and I think she'll do a very good job with your appointment.
Thanks, Chief. Paige, you want to introduce yourself to everybody for the first time, and tell a little bit about, you know, yourself and what you like to do?
Sure. So, I'm Paige. And like you said, I have lived in Dudley my whole life. So, I'm very excited to be a full-time officer here. And I thank the Chief and I run up here for giving me this opportunity.
Excellent. Board members, any questions for the Chief or Paige?
Hi, Mr. Chair. I've known Paige for many years. Went to school with my children. It's exciting to see her development. I'm sure she's gonna be an asset to the Department. I wish her nothing but the best.
Thank you.
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for doing one of the hardest jobs around. Good luck.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Kerry?
I want to echo what Mr. Johnson said. Thank you for doing this. And as well, I remember a commendation came in about a year or two ago from the Dispatch Center. I believe it was from Ms. Talinski. I didn't forget that. Nice to see you here.
Thank you.
Definitely a very challenging job over there. And, you know, she's really, along with all of them there, really learned a lot. And it really helps with your emergency response and prioritization, and a lot of the things that you have to do with the job. So, I think it's really an asset to have.
And, and Mr. Joseph?
Yeah, you know, I wanted to just, I want to compliment the Chief on picking not just a female officer, but a qualified one. And I want to tell Paige that the feedback that I've gotten from citizens whom she has encountered speak very highly of her professionalism and the way she's conducted herself in every instance. And I would welcome her to the police force.
Thank you, Mr. Joseph. And I'd say Paige, welcome. It's always an honor to get a new police officer in the town that we love, that you're from. You're also from here, so it's extra special. And I wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you.
So, with that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Sullivan.
Without reservation and with pride, honored for Paige, recommend Paige Moros, full-time Dudley police officer, effective.
Well, if you, if you want, you can make it effective even, even today. If you want to follow the motion that I gave you as a proposal, you could go along those lines. Reason being is the way the process is gonna work from here is she would have the opportunity to work full-time for us, either under her reserve status or under a waiver through the state. And we're gonna pursue whichever angle is best for us. She still does have to attend the police academy. And so, once she enters the police academy, she would become a student officer. And then, once she is graduating from there, I come back to the Board, and you'll make a formal appointment at that time, per the, per the way that the appointments are carried out. So, basically, I think what your Board will do is offer her the full-time position. She's authorized to work under either her reserve status or her, under a waiver. She'll be a student officer upon entrance into the academy and on successful completion of all the requirements. She'll be brought back to the Board for a probationary appointment for a one-year basis. And I think that should cover everything that we have from there.
All right, Chief. So, I'm gonna start over, but the motion you highlighted didn't have a date. Do you want me to just add today's date?
I just put at the end about December 20th, but you can put that in there if you aren't sure of. It's fine.
The Board votes to offer Ms. Paige Moros a full-time position with the Police Department, authorized to work under a reserve officer appointment or via waiver through the Commonwealth at the discretion of the Chief. She will assume the position of student officer upon her entrance into the police academy, upon successful completion of all requirements. She will be appointed by proper vote of the Board of Selectmen as a full-time probationary officer, effective December 20th, 2021.
Motion by Mr. Sullivan.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sigunovich. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Stephen Sullivan, aye.
Kerry Sigunovich, aye.
Paul Joseph, aye.
J. Johnson, aye.
John Marcy, aye. Unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Scotty, you wanna get a picture? Come up with your family in it, if they want. Yeah.
Family wanna come up for a picture?
Yeah, John, just pretend that I'm right behind you.
You're right there, Polly. You're here. He might not see.
Where the money go?
Let me take a picture?
Right here.
I don't want to get in.
Brett, Brett, look at Grampy. Where's your Pepe?
Hey, hold on.
Pops.
Pops. Well, hold on. One more. Okay, look at Michelle.
Do you see that way in the back of the room?
Say, hey, pops.
Gotcha.
There we go.
Stay safe.
Congratulations. Fantastic. Always a great day when we can do that, guys.
Nice Christmas present.
Nice present, yes. All right. So, let's go back to item 6A. This is part of the joint meeting. The Board of Health is here. This is a discussion regarding a recent Harrington Municipal Conference Call. Board of Health updates Board of Selectmen relative to call. Vote to take any other action relative thereto. Board of Health would like to come up? I think I know some of them, maybe all.
Good evening.
Please identify yourselves for the residents at home.
Sure. Jennifer Canoyer, Chairman of the Board of Health.
Reverend Johnson, member.
Lori Dusha, member.
Camille Griffin, Health Agent.
Okay, thank you, guys.
I'll introduce you to our new Health Agent.
Yes, I was gonna say.
This is your first time meeting her.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So, there was a joint phone call that we did on Friday with UMass Harrington Hospital. And I'm going to turn it over to Camille so that she can give you the rundown of the phone call.
So, the purpose of the phone call was really that Harrington Hospital, and similar to many hospitals across the state, are really feeling this recent COVID-19 surge. They have currently implemented all of their surge protocols and are still without beds. They have several patients that should be in the ICU that are currently on med surge floors as well. And so, they were kind of looking to brainstorm with all of the local communities as to how we can kind of, you know, put our heads together and figure out a way to help combat the recent surge in COVID numbers.
Yeah. So, their idea, so they were reaching out to the Boards of Health to see if we could perhaps implement masks again.
To do a mask mandate in the town?
Which, it didn't sound like a lot of the Boards of Health that were on the call felt that it was a good idea. The more we talked about it, we thought the way to help with the surge is probably to get more vaccines out there and vaccinate more of the population. I don't think the masks are going to be well-heard if we mandate them.
No. Basically, a lot of the discussion was that the Health Agents and Boards of Health at this point have enough going on with COVID to try to implement a mask mandate and then act upon it. Basically, if you, back when COVID first started and the state came down with the mask mandate, half the phone calls every day were, I just saw a person walk into Park and Shop. Please go investigate. I went into this pizza place. Somebody didn't have their mask on. That's not something that we feel we're equipped to handle at all, nor did the other Boards of Health. That was, everyone that was on, the majority on the call that I heard anyways, were that there's no way that this can be done. There's no enforcement. There's no penalty. It's just basically saying, yes, this is what we want you to do. And personally, I just don't think that our Board can do that and police it and implement it. I think the better route is to provide information, remind people, and vaccination, to be able to provide vaccinations.
Yeah. So, after the call on Friday, I went online and I placed the order for the vaccines. So, we can now, Pfizer approved 16-year-olds for the booster. So, that gave us a bigger window of, you know, people that we could, you know, focus on. So, we were approved for five to 11-year-olds, and we're kind of waiting on the booster part now. So, we're hoping that once, if we can get the vaccines, that we could start, you know, get a clinic out there. So, we could get whoever needs the booster or needs a first shot or a second shot to come on out.
And how many did we, did you order?
100.
100.
That was all they gave me. Yeah, 100. Yeah.
Mr. Sullivan?
I want to thank the Board of Health for our presentation, and I think you made a wise decision on the mandate. Feedback we've, we've got through the process, too. I'm sure you guys got tenfold. So, you, does Harrington still schedule shots? Like, do we still send people to Harrington through our Board of Health? Like, we didn't exhaust that list, right?
What's that?
Sorry. We didn't exhaust the list of residents that wanted a shot, or have we gone through the whole list?
We've gone through the entire list.
So, is Harrington doing boosters? Are we doing a booster list through town? Not yet, or?
We did not do a booster list. If anyone calls, we, we weren't able to get anything. So, we were, we had Amanda advise them to contact any of the pharmacies around or Harrington, and they could schedule their appointment, depending on what their booster was as to where they could go.
Kerry was big on that, making sure, you know, banner on the website, the town's website.
Oh, yes.
Big red button.
But that, we don't have that option anymore right now.
No.
No, I didn't know our plans.
No.
I just wanted people who wanted it to be able to have.
Yeah.
All right, here's where I go. And it makes it easier because people aren't gonna dig through to find. But I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no. No. We have a survey on right now on the website as to who still is in need of a booster, who's interested in the shot, just to give us an idea of what our community still wants, how we could best help them.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Ruda.
Good. So, I was also on the call, and all the surrounding towns and cities that are served by Harrington essentially were on the call. And there was absolutely, the feedback was that there's really no taste for local Boards of Health going around enforcing mask mandates. We certainly would be happy, I think, to issue guidance in terms of when it's a good idea to wear a mask and when it isn't. We have a draft memo for the Board of Selectmen to show how we're gonna handle things internally, in terms of those that were vaccinated and those who aren't. But we thought the best way to approach this, as the Board of Health has said, is to make it, make the vaccination completely available to people who want it. If, if people are on the fence and it's easy to get, we talked about maybe a couple hours every morning when people are on their way to work, or on their way home from work, you can walk into the fire station maybe and get it. That hasn't been planned out yet, but those are the kind of things that the Board of Health are considering, as well as a clinic where you can actually schedule your vaccination, you know, over the weekend. So, the 100 shots, which, I mean, it's great that Reverend was able to get those. And I'm hoping that we can look forward to more shots and have some sort of model that, that actually addresses the problem. One of the things that, as Harrington was speaking on the call, they readily admitted that it's completely, completely enforceable. So, it didn't, it seemed pretty pointless to spend any amount of time working on unenforceable things as opposed to things that would not work, such as vaccination. So, my credit to the Board of Health for pivoting the way they did to not just say, no, we're not doing it, walking away, but taking on the problem head-on and saying, what can we do? And I think the vaccination is definitely a step in the right direction.
Yeah. I had applied for the one for the adults as well. And then they responded and said, I wanted, what, 4?
450.
450. And they said, well, we can give you 1,200. I'm like, well, I don't, I don't, I don't need 1,200. I want 450. So, I'm gonna revisit it on Thursday, 'cause I guess that amount was sold out. I don't want to say sold out, but not available. So, we can get it. And it was a really fast turnaround, 'cause today's Monday. And I did this Friday, like 3:30, 4 o'clock. So, it wasn't, I, I thought it was gonna be like last time, where we got denied, denied, denied. It took months, but it was very fast. So, I'm hoping Thursday, we'll hear by maybe Friday or Monday. And then we can, you know, start rolling things out for the clinic. It's been a only, you know, a fairly good response. I think we have, what, 18 total?
Yes.
So, it's not bad. And that's just who read the survey. So, if we can get the word out there some more, hopefully we can get more people. And we can open it up to other towns as well.
Right.
So, we're hoping Charlton would come as well. So.
Because Charlton did a survey about a month or two ago, and they had limited response, but people who are interested. So, we figured by merging with them, where it is Dudley-Chelton Regional School District, we'd put that out there as well. You know, the more people we can get vaccinated. You know, the more people we can get vaccinated, boosted, whatever, and educated, that's where I feel our services are best put forward, rather than, you know, no, no, no to somebody. I just feel we should educate and put as much information out.
In our clinic that we held in the spring was amazing. We heard nothing but wonderful feedback from the residents that were able to come to get vaccinated.
We've been practicing this, for this stuff, for years. So, you know, unfortunately, twice a year, we have to do a setup of a clinic, so.
We got this.
Yeah.
I think so.
Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just while you have the group here, I just wanted to just pass along my thanks to all the Board of Health members and our health nurse for the tremendous job they've done with this whole thing from day one. You have mostly, again, a group here that's volunteer and/or doing a, doing like a secondary service job here. And this task was extremely overwhelming, to say the least. And we're very fortunate to have all these folks here doing the job that they're, they're doing. We even had a, I even had several of my guys over last month that were out with it. And really, the stress and strain that puts on the staff and the operation. But anytime we talk to either Roberta or Jen or anybody from the Board of Health, we get nothing but tremendous support and everything else. And again, I would totally agree with exactly the position that they're saying because it's really almost like a thankless job. And if they have to go around and, you know, be, be a mask, mask police, it's not a, not a fun gig. But I just want to make sure that publicly that they were acknowledged for the work that they're doing. They had this thrown upon them when, really, I'm sure, especially most of the Board members said, "Hey, this looks like a great gig. I'll just, you know, show up and talk about, you know, some food regulations or something like that."
Septic systems.
Make sure the septic systems are great. And then we'll go home. And then look what, look what happened. I had to get thrown. But we're very, very fortunate to have the people that we have. So while they were here, I thank you for the time. I just wanted to make sure that they're acknowledged publicly for the great work that they did and are doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
One night a week, right, gentlemen?
Yeah. Just like scouts.
One hour, one hour a week.
Yeah, it's fine.
Sometimes you don't even meet.
Board members?
Mr. Ruda. Chairman, just before we go around, if we could just ask the Board of Health to kind of review that draft memo that they're about to put out.
Oh, great idea.
That covers the guidance internally for employees.
I, I did see it. Did you, did, Camille see it?
I don't think so.
Okay, I know I saw it, but we'll.
Just hit on the key points.
So just read the whole thing?
Whoever signed it should probably read it.
That would be Nurse Roberta.
Yeah, it's Roberta.
It's me, yes. So I just came up with a letter that I wanted to share with everyone to kind of remind people, many people are vaccinated, we get that, but with the variants that are coming out, people are still exhibiting symptoms that are not as bad as they were last year, where they were the classic, you know, sore throat, fever, cough. And now with people that are vaccinated, you might have, you know, a runny nose, a little congestion, and you think it's not a whole lot. So in my conversations with a lot of people, it, it just kind of dawned on me that we should revisit the memo and just remind people that, you know, if you don't feel well, to please stay home and to consider, if you have symptoms and you're vaccinated, to test. Because it could be, and if it's not and you still don't feel well, to reach out to your doctor to see if it's maybe something different. Because it could. We, we still have the flu, we still have strep throat. So we still have the common cold, but I think because of COVID, we automatically think, oh, it's not COVID, it's probably something different. So just some signs and symptoms, you know, and a little blurb that I wrote about, if you're vaccinated and you don't have symptoms, the guidance says that you don't have to quarantine. If you have symptoms, then you should test. And if you're unvaccinated, that you don't have, that you should quarantine and test. So I just kind of came up with that little blurb to remind people.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Unfortunately, we were not one of the communities to get home tests. The state had given out some tests to the area and surrounding towns. We were not one of the towns.
Like rapid tests or?
Yeah.
Webster. Yeah, so 102 communities in Massachusetts were allocated at home, free at-home rapid tests for the 102 communities with the highest percentage of people living at or below the poverty line. So Webster was allocated.
So by having low rates, that's a good thing?
What was that?
Seems to be the trend.
By having low infection rates, that's a good thing?
Yes.
So I'd say not getting the test isn't necessarily a negative. It just shows we're.
We're doing well.
We're doing well. What's our, Mr. Chair, what's our overall vaccination rate? Do we have a number on it? It was hovering around 50-something percent for a long time.
I don't know. Because so many people, you know, just went out and did it after our clinic, where we had a good number, you know, so I'm not sure. I haven't seen that number, I'm not sure. I don't know. And were you able to find out any info if we could get some testing or no?
Or the employee testing?
Yeah.
I did reach out this afternoon, and I have not heard back yet. But it's an avenue that we're looking at for employees or municipal employees who are either symptomatic or identified as close contacts, that we might be able to offer them some rapid tests as well.
Excellent.
Excellent. Board members? Commentary?
Great update.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. So just to say it again, because that's kind of what I do. If, if someone's looking for a booster, they should either look to a pharmacy nearby or get in touch with Harrington.
That is correct at this time, yes.
Webster's closed, they're not doing it anymore, so they have to go to Southbridge.
Right. And you have to schedule an appointment.
All right, or Walgreens.
Yeah, right. CVS.
Yeah. The mass.gov website, you can put in your area code and get 10-mile radius, and I'll show you the places that.
See, that's good information too, thank you.
You're welcome. Same with testing, you can go to the mass.gov website and look for, or radius for testing options in the area.
Time is, Chair, I got mine at CVS in the mall in Milbury. Simple, on my, signed up. I'm sorry. No, that was just a target. Target store.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Any other commentary, Mr. Sullivan?
Easy to do.
Any other, any commentary for the Board of Health?
Yeah.
Thank you, guys, that was a great update, and I think you made the right decision.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, guys, appreciate you.
Appreciate the Board of Health.
Always, always. All right.
Perse.
All right. Now, with item six B, the A, B, C, C. It's 2022 seasonal population increase estimation form. You're supposed to sign it. Mr. Ruda?
The state tells us what our population is, we sign a form saying this is our estimate and send it back to them.
And that's as simple as that, so we will sign.
Is that it?
That's it.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chair, just for the public, what do we have, what do we have available for licenses?
Oh, boy.
If it's too much, next meeting.
Okay.
Well, didn't we just vote?
You'll get three more, right?
At town meeting, we got three more, right?
We have two more available right now.
Two more right now.
We have two more, all alcohol.
Yeah.
Right, okay. All right, what's the Board's pleasure? I think it's, we just didn't sign it, we have to vote on it, right?
No.
Okay. Just sign, okay.
Our, our signatures are showing that we acknowledge what we're to.
Acknowledge.
Acknowledge.
Okay, we'll do that right now.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Johnson?
Do we know if there's any impact after it changes? Certain, certain thresholds of population?
Well, the latest impact that we had that we're ahead of is the change in the voting precincts. We're adding that one precinct that we're right on the threshold. We'll probably cross that threshold when the middle project is completed. And then there are other things we'll need to discuss about increased services, such as Veterans Agent. When do we actually cross that threshold? When it's cert, signed, and certified and everything else.
Okay. All right, now that that's been signed, item six D. So Dudley Police Department has a lot tonight. Chief Weiner's here, and he wants to declare a sergeant opening. Chief Weiner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hopefully, last time for, for the evening, and I appreciate you taking these, these matters up. Yeah, again, as a residual of the lieutenant appointment, and it has these things that have kind of rolled down, we'll have a sergeant's vacancy in the, in the department. So a couple of things, as I've given your Board a, an updated job description for the, for the position of sergeant. And so I just ask you to, to take, take some moves tonight if you would approve the revised job description, or certainly I can discuss anything with that if you have, have questions. And ask the Board to declare a opening on the department, sergeant's opening effective today. And finally, I'll ask a vote to authorize me to work with Public Safety Consultants, the same group that did our lieutenants' process, to conduct a written examination and assessment center to establish a list of candidates. I believe as an early straw poll estimate, I have probably about five individuals that would be eligible for the position. So it's a good way to screen the candidates and provide a list for the Board to consider. So those would be the, the three things I'd ask you to consider this evening.
Thank you, Chief. Board members?
Chief, is anybody, excuse me, anybody in, well, Matt hasn't really stepped up yet. Any, any plans to put somebody into like an interim sergeant role to help your command functions?
Well, I was thinking of that, but I guess the question would be is, I think we'd be able to do this like the first week of February. So it probably would only be about maybe three weeks, four weeks timeframe between the, the time that he takes the position and I'd probably have the process done. So I'd be able to bring something to the Board first part of February, most likely, to have, have a consideration for you. So, you know, we, we, we did it the last time. We had, we had three candidates that were all roughly about the same, and we'd given them each like a month to basically try, try the job on. Each, each had them do it for a month. With the five now, it'd be a little bit difficult to do it, especially over such a short period of time. So I don't know if there'd be necessarily a need to have to do that right away, because I think we'd be able to fill the position fairly, fairly quick.
Fair enough. Hey, anybody else? All right, Board members? Jay?
Make a motion to declare a sergeant opening for the Dudley Police Department.
Motion by Mr. Johnson?
Second with question.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Discussion, Mr. Sullivan.
Does, but that motion, does that encompass the chief's suggestion about revised job description? Do we need a motion now? Or we just, that's just procedural, you, you did that, we have to accept that?
Yeah, the Board, if the Board accepts the job description, that's, that would cover it. You could do it all in one vote, you could do them in several votes, whatever you, you wish to do. It's your choice.
Sure, let me just read through this one more time.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Joseph?
Could I recommend that the Board include two things in the motion? First is the approval of the proposed job description, and the second is the creation of the position.
Okay. Creation of the vacancy. So there's, in the proposal for the, the motion, it reads, "Make a motion to approve the revised job description for the position of sergeant and to declare a sergeant opening effective today, December 20th, with an anticipated date of appointment to be early February 2022, and to authorize the chief to work with Public Safety Consultants LLC to conduct a written examination and assessment center to establish a list of candidates for the position of police sergeant."
Perfect, thank you.
So that'll be your revised motion?
Yes.
Is that okay with the second there? It is?
That's a motion.
Yeah? That is a motion. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks for writing it.
Trying to make it easy, that's.
Clear, crisp, concise. Cut yourself on that motion. Any other discussion? Hearing that, roll call vote, please.
Jay Johnson, I. Stephen Sullivan, I.
Paul Joseph, I.
Every second of a try.
John Marcy, I, unanimous.
Thank you very much, I appreciate the, I appreciate the support of the Board because really, I know I threw a lot at you over the last month or so, so I appreciate you, you taking this up in time, and we'll have everything to you, being part of you. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you, Chief. All right. Item seven, old business. Olivia Antonson is here.
Did we vote on that?
Yeah, we just did.
Okay, that was not required of a roll call?
Yeah, we just did.
Yeah.
Yeah, you did, Paul. We're all set.
Okay.
And the permitting fees study, request to adjust permitting fees. We tabled this from last meeting, so Mr. Joseph and I could, could attend. Mr. J, Mr. Sullivan?
Mr. Chair, as Olivia's coming up, I want to thank her publicly again. As she indicated, she has now graduated, so she's really on her own dime this time.
Yay.
And I asked for the tabling only because I wanted you and Mr. Joseph here, I don't know if she's going to do the whole presentation again, but the gist of the previous motion was the fees hadn't changed in over 10 years. They had been studied in 2015, it hadn't been changed. And the end result, if we accepted the recommendation, it put us firmly in the middle of most of the fees that Olivia had looked at for us. So it seemed to me at the time that it was a good, good move, good report she had given, but I wanted the whole Board to have a chance to speak on it.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
I did, so I want to say thank you for that, Stephen.
Okay.
You're welcome, Paul.
Jay?
And also, there was some secondary ask to see. I believe it was more data based on, basically, a percentage margin and, you know, possibly a plan for the increased revenue as opposed to just, you know, increasing fees without a purpose.
Right.
So, Mr. Chairman, if, if it's the Board's pleasure for her to quickly run through for you and Mr. Joseph, her, her presentation last time, which she did very quickly the first time, we can also include some additional data that the Board asked her for at the last meeting.
Okay, Olivia, go ahead, yeah, I'd like to see it.
Thank you.
Good refresher, good refresher for everybody.
Thank you.
Okay. Awesome, thank you. So, good evening, gentlemen, it's great to be back here. I'm going to run through this presentation pretty quickly, and then we'll get to the new information and really dive in. So an introduction and summary here. This was created to provide visual and written representation of the permit fees in Dudley in comparison to five local towns. Those towns are Webster, Oxford, Southbridge, Charlton, and Stirbridge. It was prepared in order to answer the question of whether or not the town of Dudley should increase some or all of its permit fees. And the fee comparisons tonight highlight categories in which Dudley's permit fee cost is either below average or the lowest in comparison with the five neighboring towns. There are a few categories where Dudley has the highest fee. However, for the purpose of this report, focus is not placed on these areas. And the last increase to permit fees came in 2012. Starting off with fee comparisons, electrical, we have here. Figure one shows electrical garage. Figure one displays the differences in fees for garage electrical work. Dudley has the second lowest fee at $75, and the average fee of the six local towns is $92.50. Figure two is electrical for pool house. It displays the differences in fees for pool house electrical work. Dudley has the lowest fee at $75, and the average fee of the six local towns is $107.50. Figure three, really similar here, electrical shed. Dudley has the lowest fee, $75, and the average fee of the six local towns is $100.83. Moving on to fee comparisons, gas. Here we have, figure four is gas residential first fixture.[1701.94] Due to variances in how each town structures its fees, this chart reflects the permit fees for a single fixture. Dudley has the third lowest fee at $75, the same as two other towns, and the average fee of the six local towns is $104.67. Figure five, gas commercial first fixture, again, variances in fee structures. So Dudley has the lowest fee at $75 and the average fee of the six local towns is $138.00. Moving on to fee comparisons, plumbing. So figure six displays the differences in fees for reviewing commercial plumbing plans. Dudley has the lowest fee at $125.00. The average fee of the six local towns is $154.17. With figure seven here, we have plumbing residential finish above ground. Dudley has the lowest fee at $75, the same as two other towns. Average fee of the six local towns is $104.17. Fee comparisons, building, this is where it gets a little funky. Fee, figure eight displays the differences in fees for residential construction. Due to variances in how each town structures its fees, a dollar value of $100,000 was assigned to this example residential construction project. Dudley has the lowest fee at $600 and the average fee of the six local towns is $850.00. Figure nine is residential addition and renovation, $100,000 project. Dudley has second lowest fee at $600 and the average fee of the six local towns is $658.33. Figure 10 is commercial construction, $100,000 project. Dudley has the third lowest fee, $800 and the average fee of the six local towns is $816.67. With this, this is a $5,000 windows and doors project. Dudley would have the lowest fee at $50, the same as one other town, and the average fee of the six local towns is $70.83. Here we also have a table displaying Dudley versus the high, low, mean, median, and mode of the six local towns for all of the 11 previous permits I've mentioned. The mean being the average, the median is the middle of the data set, and the mode is the most frequently occurring number in the data set. Revenue, figure 12 is revenue for the zoning department from fiscal years 16 to fiscal year 2021. And in fiscal year 21, you can see the zoning department's revenue hit a six-year low, collecting $650.00. Figure 13 is the revenue for the building department from fiscal year 17 to fiscal year 20. There was a steady decrease in revenue. Fiscal year 21 saw an increase in revenue from fiscal year 20, but fiscal year 21 is still the third lowest revenue amount in the six-year lookback. Also going to look here at salaries for our building inspector. You can see this is a pretty steady increase in salary for the building inspector. And then here for the zoning licensing and inspector clerk salary, we can see there has been a decrease from fiscal year 19 to 20 due to a change in staffing. But then there is a increase from 20 to 21. Also looking here at expenses, so these are general expenses in the building department. We can see that fiscal year 21 saw a sharp increase in general expenses. As for supplies expenses in the building department, we can see here that this number has held relatively steady since fiscal year 18 and decreased slightly in fiscal year 21. Expenses related to travel in the building department, fiscal year 21 saw a sharp increase in travel expenses. And then we have here, figure 19, displaying trending gross profit for the building and zoning departments over the previous six fiscal years. Fiscal year 19, 20, and 21 had the three lowest gross profit amounts out of the six-year lookback. Okay, so this is my conclusion from my last report, different than my conclusion from my upcoming one. There has been an increase in expenses in more than one category within the building department. The building inspector's salary has increased steadily over the six-year period. The zoning department has seen a sharp decrease in revenue. The past three fiscal years resulted in less profit than the three fiscal years before that period. From fiscal year 17 to 18, there was a 62% decrease in gross profit. And from 18 to 19, there was a 77.5% decrease in gross profit. And the department recently eliminated one full-time benefits position, saving about 12 grand a year. Recommendations, a raise in permit fees is justified. In the 11 fee comparisons provided covering plumbing, electrical, building, and gas, Dudley is either one of the lowest or the lowest in terms of cost. Dudley provides above-average services and fees should reflect this. It is not recommended that the board of selectmen decide to increase permit fees to such high costs that would impose a financial burden on residents and commercial developers. Increasing some of the town of Dudley's permit fees would subsequently increase revenue to the building department, likely leading to an increase in gross profit. This additional revenue could be used to cover the increasing salaries of the building inspector and the zoning licensing inspector clerk. The building department has also incurred a yearly fee to operate and maintain the online permit system known as OpenGov. The town of Dudley began using this online system in fiscal year 22, hence why it's not included in any of my calculations earlier because I was focusing on fiscal year 16 to 21. The yearly cost to operate OpenGov is approximately $26,000. And some of the increased revenues could be allocated towards the cost of the OpenGov system. Now is where we get into our new information. So this is our additional information to supplement my previous report. Here we have figure 20. So this is the building department salaries out of the six towns. Figure 20 displays the total salaries for the building departments in the six local towns for calendar year 2020. These totals include the sum of building department positions such as building inspector, electrical inspector, plumbing, gas inspector, and backup inspectors. These amounts do not include administrative staff such as clerks. The total average salary expense of the six towns is $101,673. You can see here that Dudley is well lower than any other town listed. And then figure 21 is the building inspector salaries out of the six towns. Figure 21 displays the building inspector salaries in the six local towns for calendar year 2020, while there are multiple positions that account for the totals in figure 20. Figure 21 is based on just one salary with the exception of Oxford because it looked like they had broken it down into two separate positions doing one job. So in Dudley, it's the building inspector, and Webster, it's the building commissioner and ADA coordinator. Oxford is building commissioner, like I said, two positions. Southbridge is called assistant building inspector. Charlton is the building commissioner, and Stirbridge is building commissioner and zoning enforcement official. You can see that Dudley pays the lowest at only $26,671 because it is a part-time position, whereas other towns are in the high 60s, mid 80s range for a building inspector salary. Okay, moving on to revenue. So there is an anticipated increase in the building department's revenue in fiscal year 22 of up to $30,000 greater than fiscal year 21's total revenue. This is the projection that the board had asked for. The building department's total revenue can be broken down into three-year and six-year averages. The three-year average, which includes fiscal years 19 through 21, is $88,619.43. And the six-year average, which includes fiscal years 16 to 21, is $120,667.92. Figure 23 here is gross profit as a percentage of revenue. It's displaying the gross profit of the building department as a percentage of the department's total revenue from fiscal years 16 to fiscal year 21. So we can see that fiscal year 2017 was kind of that outlier we had seen earlier. But other than that, it's kind of 44 to 45, down to 15, 23, climbing back up to 44 in fiscal year 21. We do have some indirect costs associated with the building department. One of them is the treasurer's office. They have to process the payments for the building department permits. And the treasurer's office estimates that about 1.5 hours per day are spent processing these building department permit payments. This number varies depending on the volume of permits. It's also important to note that KP Law, which is town council, is another indirect cost associated with the building department. Jeff Blake is the primary attorney for the building department-related legal services. And during the period beginning 9/22/20 and ending 2/26/21, which is about five months, Attorney Blake's services cost $5,013 for 29.5 hours' worth of work associated with the building department. An increase in building department volume could lead to an increased need for KP Law's legal services. Conclusion, it is difficult to subtract the indirect cost of the building department in order to adjust the previous gross profit calculations without impacting the validity of the data. The indirect costs presented can be used to estimate the impact on the building department's gross profit calculation. An increase in the volume of permits associated with the building department will lead to increased operating costs across multiple categories. And the increased revenue that results from the increase of the permit fees can be allocated to cover the costs listed on the next slide. These are some of the costs that could be covered by an increase in permit fee revenue. We have here Stevens Mill, three host community agreements, two marijuana grow facilities, two marijuana retail stores, 22 units at a 55-plus community, one possible new dorm building at Nichols College, two potential roof replacements at Dudley schools, solar panels at the town's landfill plus all associated regulatory and compliance costs. Truman Drive subdivision, Pure Point Estates are under construction. JD&amp;D Construction on Oxford Ave. CEBG Housing Rehabilitation under a recently secured grant. Whiskey Rock's Restaurant, potential green space at Town Hall. Yearly salary increases, $26,000 yearly cost for OpenGov system, operating and maintenance expenses. Potential increase in insurance and benefits such as workers' compensation. Any extra hours for the building inspector that come with increased workload. Any help for the building inspector that comes with an increased workload. Increased time spent by the treasurer's office on building department-related work, and possible increase in the need for KP Law's legal services.
We're, excellent. That was a lot, a lot of good information. Thanks for running through that quickly. I have a question. So where does the open Gov expense sit now? Jay?
What's the?
The Open Gov, the?
It's $26,000.
I know, where does it sit?
Who's paying it?
Who's paying it?
The general, I'm paying it out of the administrative side of the budget.
Okay. Okay. Because I noticed like you saw the cost go up and it wasn't, was that in that curve that showed the costs?
No, it's only $1,600.
Oh, was it? Oh, I couldn't read the numbers, but, okay. Board members?
The biggest issue, Mr. Chairman, is the amount of projects we have coming up, the amount of time we have allotted to a building inspector, and the fact that we will have to bring an additional inspector to do the commercial inspections through the Stevens Mill. We will have to pay. And if we run into a situation where we need to replace our current building inspector at any point in time, it won't be the same salary model. It'll be much higher. So it's an point that we consider getting ahead of it. And ahead of all these projects before we go down the road and have to react to it rather than to proactively address it.
Fair enough. Board members? Carrie?
I, I just have a question. Costs to be covered. What costs are we covering from Stevens, host community agreements, marijuana grow facilities? So, so we would raise the permit fees to cover costs associated with these items?
So, for example, for the Stevens Mill, through the chair, we'll need to bring in additional, additional inspectors that specialize in commercial inspections to get through that entire process, and we'll have to pay that person.
Okay. Makes sense. Mr. Sullivan?
I mean, the, just the salary portion of her presentation, just dovetail what the town administrator just said. We, Nelson does an outstanding job. You know, we know he does over, over the bucky hours that he's budgeted and compensated for. And as Olivia pointed out, a lot of those times he'd have two people doing the same job while they split into two different roles, but they get paid for it. And I agree with the town administrator, like, if we, if we ever have to replace that position specifically, it's going to be a big cost. And example, like it was last time, I'll use it again. We did it at the transfer station. We kept the fees low for the longest time. And then we got hit with a, Jeff could speak on it, and Jonathan, the cost in recyclables and trash pickup. And we were, we had no built-up surplus. And we had to deal with people telling us, oh, we know that transfer station made money through the years. Where did it all go? Well, guess what? When the costs quadrupled and we put the information out there. I mean, we're not trying to, we're not trying to put the mask on and rob anybody. We're just trying to put ourselves in line with what the industry is, what the industry is charging and potentially going to have to pay someday.
Carrie?
I, I think it all comes down to this. It, we're at a fork in the road. Are we going to use these permit fees as a revenue generating source? Or are we going to have these fees to cover the costs of administering them? Because if we're going to cover the costs of administering them, and we're not looking for it to be a revenue generator, we need to do a deep dive to get a little closer. Because I know the salaries don't include benefits, retirement, whatever. That's a lot of detail and minutia to get that. Where if we're using this as a revenue generating platform, then we could just go with the average of the other towns and be done with it. It's just a matter of what is the objective of this goal? Revenue generation, or are we covering our costs?
Makes sense. Mr. Sullivan?
That's an excellent point. I didn't even think of it in that way Carrie just explained it. Because when we went to the model at the transfer station, I think it started with two previous administrators. We told the administrator to bring forward a model that included insurance and all the fringe benefits as part of the so-called profit. And my, I remember back then, my answer was, well, we don't tell, we don't tell other departments that have regulatory authority that you have to generate enough volume of revenue, whether it's tickets or violations or burn permits, to cover your departmental cost. So I don't think the intent is to, like I said before, to really ring it up. But as Carrie just put, if we went to the midpoint of industry standard as Olivia presented it, I'm very comfortable with that. We're not, as Mr. Johnson said, we're not trying to keep up with the Joneses. And we're not trying to be the one that the Joneses compare themselves to. We're taking the data provided with the extra data that he requested and she provided, Olivia. And a sound, reasonable assumption is we need to make some kind of adjustment.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Joseph?
Yeah, it's, it's clear that at this point, regardless of what our reason, our reasons may be, we've got to stop kicking the can down the road. Because the can's not going to get any smaller.
Got it. Jay?
So, this goes back to discussion two weeks ago. We need a plan looking forward. And we need to understand how much it's going to, going to cost to do that. So we've got OpenGov, we know that's, right? And if it's primarily used by the building department, then the cost should be, you know, targeted in that direction. Then we have to define what we need in the future. So if we're saying that we have a potential for a staffing salary increase in, you know, X number of months, years, decades, then you just plan accordingly. And figure what that number is. And it goes back to what Carrie says. If you're picking a number based on covering costs plus, you know, some buffer for variation, then, then let's do that. My whole point of disagreeing two weeks ago was we didn't have a plan. Some of this can be put into a plan. We have to do some things and we have to prepare for the future. I can, I can get behind that with a little bit more detail. I think we should look at how we determine what that, that fee structure is, is determined. It's, you know, I, I look at things a little differently and I apologize, you know.
That's why I love you.
So if, if I was, you know, running a department in, in a town or a, a company, I would want to know where I am, where I'm going, and what's the plan to, to get there. And this is starting to, this is starting to get there. So I, I appreciate that. We can determine what our, our fixed and variable costs are in the department. We can figure out if all the things on the left are more activity or less activity than previous years. Because more activity generates more costs because you need more time to work on them. And they also, as a variable. And then if they're the same, then all you're doing is generating the same revenue like year on year, right? Is, is this going to be like a 2017 spike? Probably not. Which is why you throw out those, those outliers.
Yeah, but, Mr. Chair, and I, I agree with Mr. Johnson. And I do apologize earlier when I brought up my reason for postponing. I did not, did not, not take Jay's comments two weeks ago into consideration. I should have. He speaks much better than me most of the time. But I submit, even if we don't vote to increase any rates, just based on those top five costs to be covered that Olivia pointed out, I'll even go six because we, we have a good feeling that Nichols is going to increase their residential capacity. We will, we will see a spike even with, at today's fees. Because I submit that 2017 number, and I didn't, I could look it up, I did not. We probably had some bigger, bigger commercial projects in towns generated more inspections. I mean, just based on those five or six, we're going to see a spike in inspections and in fees, obviously. So, like, like Mr. Ruda said, some of those projects are very, very comprehensive and they're going to be outside the scope of what we allow, what we give our building inspector to do. So, I mean, that, that data, that data is going to be skewed, just like I think 2017 skewed for whatever the reason. We can always go back and find it, but there's, there's a lot coming down the pipe. And, you know, again, I submit, we're probably the only town, definitely on those six, but try to find more than a handful that are surviving on a 20-hour a week, or 19 hours, is it 20? Is it 20? Yeah, 20-hour a week building inspector with a shared clerk. I submit, there's nobody. And it's not, not anybody's fault, but things are falling through the cracks. People aren't either pulling permits or there's not a chance to do enforcement. And we talked about that 70-30 split, which we voted in for the other inspectors a couple of years ago. And somebody mentioned, well, there's no overhead. Well, there is. Out of their 70, they're supposed to pay their cell phone bill, their gas, they carry their own insurance. So if we're going to be increasing inspection burdens on those people, they're, they're going to be working for less money tomorrow than they are today. And we're going to lose the inspectors that we've had for years that we can count on, the backbone of the town, making sure things are done right. Because 70-30, they're losing money as cost goes up. Like their, their cell phone, like I said, comes out, the gas or their vehicle. If they were doing inspections two, a year and a half ago at $1.80 a gallon, now they're doing it at just 3.40, we'll say, or 3.30, they're already losing money.
Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Chairman?
Hang on, Paul. Go ahead, Jay.
Yep?
So, you know, Sullivan and I are both getting to the same point, different ways. So you need the capacity to do the work that's planned. This is planned work. This is planned work, or highly likely, right? Do we have the capacity for this? If not, how do we get the capacity and what does that cost? If those costs go up, then you have to find a way to create the, the revenue to do that.
So, I think, Mr. Chairman, probably the issue is workload, right? We know that this is not, this isn't ten years over, this isn't gonna happen over the course of ten years, it's gonna happen over the course of twenty-four months. So, it's upon us now. It's more of a public policy question if the board wants to cover cost for cost, dollar to dollar. What I'm doing is proposing something that's gonna be palatable to people who are trying, we, we still have to keep in mind economic development. I'm not proposing that we cover every single penny on a ban a year when these things occur, particularly when we may be facing additional staff having to be brought in on a short-term basis. What I'm proposing is that we recognize that it's been since 2012, since we've looked at or adjusted these fees, things increase in cost and over the course of ten years. So, let's at least come up with a plan to offset those costs until we kinda have an ability to measure if this is a three or a five-year economic increase in our town or if it's a twenty-four to forty-eight month increase in our town before we think about covering cost for cost, dollar to dollar. We have to do something at this point. And I think at least being on average and on par with neighboring towns that have similar situations is a step in the right direction.
Hey, Mr. Joseph?
Yeah, you know, Jay always talks about plans, and he's most often right. But my question to Jay and to Jonathan, and actually for all the selectmen is, when do you want that plan in hand?
Mr. Chairman? Uh, we need that plan today, because those projects are on our, either approved, pending approval, or, or will shortly be approved. So, as soon as, you know, dirt starts flying and, you know, boards start getting nailed together, it's, it's upon us. So, I, I'd argue, you know, the, the variable part of the plan is, you know, we don't know when the clerk wins mega millions, right? You don't, there's unexpected things, someone could decide, decide to retire, right? So, you need to have succession plans, you need to have, you know, Plan B, Plan C, and you need to be able to pay for it. So, I, I understand, you know, trying to bring in enough so that you can operate under Plan B or C without huge, you know, deficits. So, I, I'm okay if we have a plan and we wanna pay for open gov in, in the area that uses it, I, I'm okay with that. It makes sense, and the, if we're gonna talk about where to land there, I, I don't wanna talk about outliers, like 2017, you know, throw that out the window. Uh, you've got some towns that have a particular set of circumstances that create a number, either way low or way high. So, when we're talking about that, you know, it's, it sounds like I'm dumbing it down a little to say, you know, just, you know, to pick a number in, in the middle. And we should be using a median to avoid the, the huge variation. You get a huge outlier and you take an average, and the average is no good, because it's skewed because of the outlier.
I think I agree.
So, I, I'm not against a, you know, changing the, the fees. I just wanna make sure that we're gonna back that up with a plan to do all the work, short-term and long-term.
I think, Mr. Chairman, having been part of the, part of the board of selectmen in one capacity or another for the last ten years or so, we can, and even the last few years, we can certainly say that this twenty-four, twenty-four months of upcoming projects is certainly more than we've seen in the last decade, easily.
Yeah, I see that.
In that short period of time.
But what do we always say, Mr. Chairman? We got Stevens and DMA, both at a certain step of the process, and that's almost eighty, that's eighty million dollars worth of projects. I mean, we challenge a town our size, find someone just on those two alone, that's not an accountant. The extra facilities we got now popping up and the, you know, the potential for Nichols. I, I think, I, I agree with everybody said. I think the, the first step of the plan would be to put ourselves on a solid financial footing. And then we can determine going forward, as like Jason, if there's a resignation or a change in status down there. I mean, we trusted the administrator to, to come up with a staffing plan at the town hall, where we've consolidated positions into full-time positions. So, as Olivia said, it looked like we had a salary saving that office. Well, that's because we shifted some of that burden onto another department's budget in order to get someone full-time. So, that person made less than the other person, but it's because they're doing a bigger job, less than that one department, because their pay's coming from somewhere else, too. So, I think the, the financial footing would be the beginning of the plan. And going forward, if the administrator, we don't worry about committees all the time. If somebody wants to sit down the administrator, to plan out where we think we're gonna be or where we have to get to, I'm sure we'd have plenty of volunteers to sit with them, and come back for the people and say, this is what we did. Step A was financial footing, step B is potential staffing changing, step, you know, step C is expansion of services. Make it, you know, we're, we're lucky our inspectors will meet people at six, seven o'clock in the morning before they start their, their full-time positions or at five or six at night. I mean, we all know the inspectors, that's what they do. You know, we can get ourselves, as Kerry said, part of it is service, service orientated. Somebody wants to be able to come in and, oh, the inspector's here or the commissioner's here all day. He's not just signing permits on a Monday and a Thursday, or as you've been saying, it's financial, and then we can get into staffing and the service aspect of it.
Carrie?
That makes sense.
Not to get overly technical, but just as kind of a benchmark, the CPI inflation since 2012 has gone up by twen- roughly twenty-seven percent. That's keeping the same services.
Jay?
How much is that just this year?
Six point eight, six point eight just this year.
You can't skew the data when I'm out there.
As, as of November, December hasn't come out yet.
Can't skew the data when I'm out there, I'll take this year, can't skew.
Oh, see what he did there?
I, I'm, and again, I, I know it's an exact number, but I'm just throwing it out as kind of a barometer.
Yeah, so it's a real thing?
It is a real thing.
A real number. No, I mean, I'm satisfied, Mr. Chairman.
Um, Mike, so, you know, listening to all this, and thank you, guys, thank you, Olivia, for coming and doing it again for Paul and I. Um, and I did read through it, but it was just good to see and hear out loud. Occasionally, we were asked to do stuff like this when it comes to the ambulance fees. You know, we did that to keep pace with other towns, because that, that is a revenue generator for that department. This I, I see as a cost covering plus, right? It's a pl- planning for the future, but we don't know exactly what the future will bring. The curve isn't, none of those curves are very smooth on, on where we think they're gonna go. But I'd rather have, be able to cover it than have to take it from somewhere else. Because, you know, think about, this is economic development at the same time, so I always, that's always the, a priority for the board. So, I would, I, I, I do support adjusting it appropriately. I'm just, I'm not exactly sure how or where yet. I mean, it could take the median of, like we, like we, like you showed, but I'd like to know what the board's pleasure is.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Ruda?
If you want to adjust it appropriately, then we need to decide what we're trying to cover, what costs we're trying to cover. My thought with adjusting this initially is to offset some of the costs, not to cover the, the potential cost.
That's what I meant, I meant, that's what I meant with the plus, right? You know, we have, this is what we have now, and then we have, this is what are anticipated.
So, Mr. Chairman, I guess the question then is, is it more, if we, if we vote to raise, is it more fiscally responsible or fair? Pick the word you wanna put in there, to go to the average, or like you just said, the median? Do we go through every single fee and come up with a number? I think Olivia kinda made that easy for us. I mean, my, my personal feeling would be, we go to the average. I mean, all, all those, all those figures she showed us, if we went to the average, obviously puts us right in, basically in the middle. We're not keeping up with the Joneses, but we're not the Joneses anymore that people probably compare us to. I do business in Dudley, they only charge this much. I'm sure the inspector in Webster says, well, we don't. So, I mean, if you wanna go median, I mean.
Carrie?
I've, I've got an idea. And in the same way, my little CPI calculation was kind of a barometer to let us know where we're sitting. I think those numbers from other towns are kinda the same thing, to let us know where we're sitting. We're not, we're not four hundred percent more than somebody and we're not half the price of somebody. And, and I think, I think if, I'm just gonna throw this out there for discussion. From across the board, thirty percent increase. That would be approximately keeping up with inflation, the cost of doing business, and an extra three percent. Twenty-seven percent would be keeping up with the Joneses. Add three percent for open gov, a buffer, to be safe. I, I'd, I'd rather base, I'd rather base what we're going to do on Dudley and not so much base it on Sturbridge and Webster, but kinda use them as a guide to let us know we're not out of whack. And the reason why I'm proposing this is, you could have somebody spend a month diving into numbers, specifics of retirement costs, insurance, specific needs for specific things. You'd have Excel spreadsheets, put us to sleep, even those of us who enjoy that sort of thing, put us to sleep. I, I think, just around number thirty percent, it should've gone up twenty-seven percent just to stay with inflation. That's an extra three percent as a buffer, and we didn't have open gov back then, we have it now. I mean, I don't like raising fees, I don't like raising taxes, but we need to cover our costs for providing what we're doing.
Jay?
Thank you, Carrie. Uh, just, Mr. Chairman, the reason I say median and, and not mean or average would be if you're, uh, the more skewed the distribution of the, the values, the less likely that the, the mean is gonna give you what you want. You know, outliers really ruin an average or, or mean. So, you know, depending on how many data points you have, that's why I say median, just line it up from bottom to top, and you pick the middle one. No, that's, but that's, to Kerry's point, that's just spitballing. It's, and, you know, just picking a number to pick a number as opposed to a, a value that you're expected to take a revenue number and change it to a new revenue number, and you calculate that. And if that covers the, the expected costs of your, your future plans, then that's the right way to go. If you're just looking to level things without worrying about how much money that really is, then you do a median or mean. If you're picking a number, then you go with Kerry's method. Not sure which I prefer, right?
Well, it's not that many data points, right?
No, but.
The five towns and the.
Yeah, but the, the data points have to be the towns that make sense, right? You know, if you saw Charlton had very low costs on at least two of them, that I saw, which surprised me.
Yeah, but it's super high on a lot of the other ones.
Yeah, and then, you know, some towns that were, I expected to be super high, were super high, right? So, it's.
And that's why, they could have other things going on different than us. They might not have a revenue sharing model with the electrical and the plumbing. They could have, they could have revenue sharing models and other things.
Sure.
Did somebody over there just take a dart and throw it at a board and pick a number? We don't know. That's why I did what I did to base it off of Dudley, because we always say we're different, we're different. The Dudley way, how many times has that been said? We're different.
Mr. Chairman, just to make sure I was just correct, and, and there was a recent decrease, I believe, in Charlton, and I think it was attributable to the, um, to the big Amazon project that's being proposed on Route twenty that recently passed. And they actually decreased their fees.
Because they were asked to by a?
I don't know why, I, for whatever the reason.
Mr. Chairman, then that goes in the exact opposite direction of what we just said, based on having more.
That's a dart.
Having more ac- more activity, we need to raise the fees, bringing more staff to cover them, right? So, that's.
It's exactly, that goes to the throw in the dark then.
This isn't, this isn't Amazon, this is big for us.
Yeah.
But it's not a, you know, billion-dollar Amazon.
I like what I propose, because we're still throwing a dart, but we're very close to the dartboard.
But, well, I think you're choosing your revenue number. You know what the revenue number roughly is, it's pretty steady, increasing last year on year after, you know, tanking and coming off this 2017 high, right? So, if you think that's relatively level and that's gonna move, you know, you can extrapolate that out a little farther, then you're just, you're, you're saying, we're gonna need another, you know, thirty percent, what, what, what the dollars were on that to bring in extra help and do this, that, and the other thing, then you multiply it by the more activity, right? Then you, then you've got your expected revenue number, which should cover a cost better than the current level.
See you.
Well, I don't wanna, I don't wanna make a motion or anything out of turn. I mean, anybody can make a motion also, but I don't wanna cut any discussion off if everybody's comfortable where we're at.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking about moving this along. Paul, do you have anything else for this?
No, I'm just enjoying the discussion, I really am.
Yeah, this is a classic Dudley Board of Selectmen discussion, just for those at home, trying to think through it.
So, I'm gonna try again, Mr. Chairman, if you know mine, with the board's pleasure. My motion would be, based on several factors, not limited to, but including the fact the fees have not been changed since 2012, and we just had a presentation put forward which makes recommendations. My motion would be, and if you want me to read it, I will, to accept the new fee scheduled cost put forward in the document dated twelve, six, twenty, twenty-one. You want me to read it, I will, but if not, it's for the public record.
Motion by Mr. Sullivan, second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Joseph, discussion, Mr. Johnson.
So, that's the original proposal, take the average of all the fees for the area of towns and just create new fee structure based on the average.
That's what, Olivia, that's what your conclusions were, they were the average, right? The cost, for example.
Would you like me to pull that up right now?
Yeah, you would.
Yeah, that one page. Recommendation for adjustment page?
Yeah.
Yes, like, for example, that first one is to go from seventy-five to ninety, that's the average.
Yes, because the average of the six towns is ninety-two fifty, so that puts us pretty much at the average.
Okay, so, so, all right, so actually, her average is a little bit less.
Rounding down from the average.
Right, same thing in the next one, instead of one oh, for example, she could've said one oh five, she said one hundred. Well, she went up but down, so Kerry's thirty, some of these thirties would put us above that amount.
Yeah, I'm, I'm seeing some thirty threes and twenty.
So, I, I think, I think we, not only do we accept the results of the, of the presentation, but we also codify the proposed amounts. I mean, that way we're not into, like Kerry's doing the math real quick, thirty-three, twenty-nine, thirty-three.
I, I am, and one thing that I'd like for us to consider, this was already seconded, right?
Yes.
I'd like us to consider the, the, the plumbing is a revenue sharing model, correct?
And electrical.
Okay, because the plumbing commercial didn't go up that much. The plumbing commercial went up about, you know, it only, it only went up twenty-five, twenty-nine bucks on, twenty-nine dollars on a hundred and twenty-five dollars. That's, I'm, I'm nineteen percent, eighteen percent? Less than twenty.
Same thing.
Oh, twenty-five bucks.
And where some of them went up a lot, some didn't. I, 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 I don't, I don't want to... I'd like to convert, could you, would you mind scrolling down to? Why are you laughing?
Because I heard what he whispered.
Could we make the commercial plumbing, I, I, I'm good with, with this, it's just I, the commercial plumbing fee, I'd like to see that go up more to keep pace. Does that make sense, or no?
What are you recommending?
Um, could I bother you to scroll down a little? And the only reason is because it's a revenue sharing model, and like, like it was said, we, we want to make sure, we, we've got good people in those roles, we want to make sure we keep them. And they're not overworked, overburdened, gas gone, uh, gases gone up.
You want to see electrical?
Elec, electrical's above, electrical is like, uh,
That's not for commercial, yeah.
Electrical's thirty-three. Pool house, seventy-five to a hundred is, that, that's thirty-three. Seventy-five to a hundred, that's thirty-three percent. Seventy-five to ninety is fifteen, and that's twenty-five. But the, but the plumbing commercial, uh, if we could get that instead of one fifty-four, seventeen, one seventy-five.
So that's going to be okay with the mover and the seconder?
And, and I hate to be a stickler, it's just, I, if I was the guy...
You don't need to explain it, there's no discussion needed. All right? Sully, how are you with that?
Well, I'm, I'm good with it, the only thing is, there's no category for electrical commercial, I would like to... Does that fall under something else, Charlie?
No, that's, I think that's correct.
Okay. No, I'm good with that, Paul, if we, if you're, if you're good with it.
Then, I, so you're the mover.
Yep.
I'm the seconder, and that's okay with me, too.
So the motion would, motion would be adjusted to read, accept the recommended amounts, with the exception of commercial plumbing, which will go to one seventy-five.
One seventy-five.
Instead of one fifty, as recommended, I'm good with that, Paul.
Okay.
I just want to be fair to everybody, and keep everybody, you know.
Oh, I agree.
Any other discussion? All right, hearing that, roll call vote, please.
Stephen Sullivan, aye.
Paul Joseph, aye.
Jay Johnson, nay.
Kerry Sigundevich, aye.
John Marcy, aye. For a one vote.
Mr. Chair, I'm like, we, we stated earlier, I know we don't want to have a million committees floating around, but if Mr. Ruda wants to move a plan forward, as Jay Johnson had said, anticipating any changes, if Jay doesn't want to do it, I, I'll sit down with him, we both can sit down with the administrator later in the future at some point.
Yeah, work up a, work up the plan, right?
Have some kind of model, bring it forward, maybe after the first, after the first year.
Lucky you, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can't be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, though.
All right, all right, thank you, guys. All right, next item, uh, board member comments. Mr. Joseph?
Question?
Sure.
We're not going to meet again now until after both holidays?
Yep.
That's right. Thank you, Olivia. Nice job.
Well, in that case, I simply want to remind everyone to stay smart and be safe.
Thank you, Paul. Kerry?
I just want to wish everyone watching this a Happy New Year, Merry Christmas, whatever it is you celebrate, have a happy one. And, and I just want to state this publicly, that I, I really enjoyed being a part of this board, you saw something here. We disagreed, and we didn't yell, we didn't scream, there's no partisan garbage stuff. Somehow we talk, and, and we just figure it out in the end. And we all don't usually agree, but the town benefits from that, and I'm just happy to be a part of that. Thank you.
Kerry, Stephen.
Mr. Chair, before I wish everyone a happy Merry Christmas, holiday greetings. I talked to the administrator earlier, we have at least two new permities in town with the alcohol licenses, actually order direct from P and A. So I'm asking the administrator through Michelle, maybe, can we include some kind of email to these businesses in town? Spoke to the chief recently also about the, uh, the vote the board took several years back, last call twelve-thirty. No, no alcohol after one forty-five, everybody out at one. Chiefs made it clear, if you have to be in there because you're doing work, please notify dispatch so the guys, they know that you have permission to be in there. But I think it's important with these newer businesses, because if the license says, um, you know, port to one, I forget the exact phraseology, well, that doesn't mean you can consume at one oh five, because you got to be here on time. Have to be out unless you're an employee, so can we somehow get the message out, especially to the newer people? Twelve-thirty last call, one forty-five, no serve. Also, as Kerry said, Paul said, Merry Christmas to all, be safe. It's still a crazy time, as the board of health said, best, your best defense is get the vaccine. I know people don't want to, that's their choice. I chose to get both and the booster, best defense. But please be safe, everyone, and have a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Yeah, Merry Christmas, everybody. Uh, it was good to see some, uh, uh, some positive discussion on a topic that's not necessarily, uh, uh, a simple one. Uh, my nay was based on, uh, an oversimplification as opposed to necessarily disagreeing with the end number. So, uh, it was a good process. It's not the one I wanted. Just like, uh, what Sully said, you know, if you're in a, uh, a risky situation, you know, use all precautions available to you. You know, it's really, it's really the, the respect you have for other people, uh, if you are in a risky situation. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jay. And I'll just close with, uh, just want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, a very Happy New Year. Boards, uh, and the, the team, you know, at the town hall, and all the people that work, we work with, have accomplished a lot this year. Uh, we've moved some major, major projects forward, um, to the likes that Dudley hasn't seen before. I, for one, very proud of that. We all should be, the townspeople should be, that we're, uh, trying to, you know, find things that are the, that will work for everybody and, you know, provide, you know, future revenue, future growth, uh, from now into the future, so, best is still yet to come. So thank you, guys, for a great year. And with that, we will move to Department.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Joseph.
Yes, do we have any comments from our student select person?
Yep, they're coming up right after Departments.
Oh, we got Departments there?
We do.
Waiting patiently.
Stephen, do you want to, do you want to come back up one more time, or?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just waiting for my turn, look at that. Uh, yeah, a couple of things, we finished up our, uh, our holiday drive. Get a great, again, great support from the community, and a lot of people donated, uh, some different groups stepped up with a lot of things, so we appreciate that. Uh, those distributions are taking place as we speak. And we also did our, the gun buyback program again through, uh, UMass, uh, last weekend. Uh, we took in about eight firearms, it's an opportunity for people if they have old firearms at their home, or whatever it is. Maybe somebody passes away, or a gun becomes malfunctioning, whatever it is, and they want to just get rid of them. It was a good opportunity to do that, so we had that done. Uh, glad the tree lighting went very well, kudos to Michelle and the entire, the entire crew for everything they did for that. Uh, went very smooth, it was a great, uh, a great time, especially as you have to readjust with all the COVID things. Uh, I've got a couple of cases, I think I sent you some messages on them, can't really comment too much on them publicly, but a couple of big things that we, uh, were able to wrap up, which is, uh, very glad to, so I'll have some more information on that probably at the next meeting. And the last thing that I think we're looking at right now is, we're in the process of working with, uh, uh, trying to, uh, get online accident reports. So that's one of the things that we're looking at, uh, doing, so people, when they need a copy of an accident report, or an insurance company needs them, they can access them online. So we have to work with our, our computer vendor in order to, uh, work with an outside vendor for it. There's no cost to us for it, uh, the, uh, the service charges, uh, charges a rate, and we receive a percentage of that, uh, fee that comes back. So, just as something to save a little bit of time, energy, and effort. But again, Merry Christmas to everyone, Happy New Year, and, uh, you know, let's stay, stay safe and we'll be good. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Great news, that more stuff online, again, that's forward-thinking, thank you. Jeff, anything?
Yeah, just a couple of things briefly, the, uh, generator here at the, uh, municipal center is back in service. Repairs were done last week. The crews are out, uh, and preparing, ready for, ready for any storm activity. Fortunately, we haven't really had anything substantial yet, knock on wood. And, um, uh, the, uh, one last thing is, um, due to the fact we're making an, an adjustment to the way we manage the, uh, snow and ice, we're gradually phasing out and reducing the amount of, uh, sand and salt that are used, uh, for those. We're no longer providing any, uh, any salt or, or sand at the, uh, at the highway facility. So, I've had several calls from, uh, residents, and I just wanted to make people aware that we, uh, won't be providing that as a result of the, uh, MS four and the, the, uh, storm water management program that we're, that we're utilizing. That's about it.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody in, uh, in the board.
Thank you, Jeff. George?
Uh, nothing major, um, just want to let you guys know that there's been some, uh, issues around town with, uh, leaks of services, where people have, uh, seen some areas of, uh, freezing on the road. That, most of it's being taken care of now, it's, uh, a matter of people trying to get contractors to fix them, they can't find them because they're so busy. Uh, we've been able to tie a few in other houses here and there, and a lot of them have already been done now. So that should be whittling away, and it's supposed to be warmer weather, too, so, uh, most of it should be all set by Christmas time, we should get them on.
Then include the one on Fifth Avenue, which I've read.
That just was done today. We're on top of it. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, George.
Richard?
Good evening. My apologies, was not here on the December sixth, so I'd like to rewind just a little bit, a few items. December first, we had attorney Michael Sacco, he is the CEO of the Worcester Regional Retirement System. Yeah, he is, he gave a, a presentation here for those in the Worcester Regional Retirement System. Obviously, if you're going to retire, it's not a snap decision. The idea is to understand what benefits are coming to you under thirty-two B, health insurance, all of those things. So it was good, thank you. The Board of Selectmen opened the town hall, um, maybe thirty, thirty-five people, but it's important. It's one of those things, uh, you've heard it once, you've heard it a second time, you can read a piece of paper, but when you have the CEO, the attorney, the, the person who's been doing this for a couple of decades, he has the chance to answer some questions, he gets the gear going, also, um, with big smiles. Uh, I know there were some people in the room who unofficially are getting closer and closer, it's amazing. You think about retiring, but you're still young and thirty-nine, and should like that. I appreciate that you were able to sign on December sixth. We had a ban renewal, point four-five for two hundred and ten thousand. Remember, we had a sewer INI study and a paydown on the street sweeper. Also, last week, we had nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, remember, that's the clean water, the sewer INI, all of the in situ form, all of the linings that we've done. Uh, that note for the State Revolving Fund is getting close to finalizing, again, thank you. You came in not during a meeting to make sure that that all got signed. Uh, also, appreciate Lori Smith. Uh, we're going through and we're doing these things once, it means she did her homework, the town of Dudley did something once, they did it right, and we're sort of moving forward, we're not spinning our wheels on anything in advance. There's another one point seven that's going to be coming up, so I'm going to be asking the board for their signature first week in January, fingers crossed. Nothing happens over the close of one year and the beginning of another. Back to the budget, the town administrator, there's a few things that are already in motion. Last week, we had a, a meeting with our property and casualty people, Maya, they have their annual meeting over at the MMA in Boston in, uh, January, the third weekend, something like that. This is the halfway point. These are the people who came in, um, with some goodwill, saying the town of Dudley has some opportunities. Workers comp, injured on duty, all of the property and casualty. We have the chance to earn some credits, we have a chance to get some grant money. This is sort of the update that we had, more to come. Obviously, we want to get as much as we can done before the renewal. Health insurance, Medex is already closed as far as the open enrollment goes. Right now, the Hampshire Council of Governments Insurance Trust is going through and doing some modeling. We're a trust, we're not buying insurance, so we get a chance to go through and see what Blue Cross has as opposed to CVS Caremark for prescriptions, items like that, so it's just not somebody coming in snapping a piece of gum, being a slick Rick, saying, here's your twelve percent. There's some analysis that gets us to the number, we have months run out as far as reserve. So again, we're doing our due diligence well ahead of the March vote, that's going to give us a solid number moving forward. Fingers crossed things look good. Final back to the Worcester Regional Retirement System, again, mid-January, we're going to get our assessment. It's one of those fixed costs that the increase in the building department is going to cover. It goes up and up and up, again, we're, we're looking to fund fully by twenty thirty-six. By statute, we could go out to twenty forty, but who knows what the stock market is going to do? We've also reduced our rate of return as far as the actuary goes. So again, that's kind of why we moved things out to twenty thirty-six, and of course, I need to be the Grinch and say, uh, your tax bills should be hitting the mail sometime this week. Fingers crossed they show up next week. Everybody's had that, uh, Christmas Eve joke, I don't want to get another egg thrown at my house. That's it, I appreciate everybody, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah.
Merry Christmas, George, thank you.
Thank you.
Student representative.
Um, boys' basketball had their first game against Algonquin and lost by one point two weeks ago. And they had another game this past Friday against Marlboro and won with the final score of seventy-one to fifty. And then girls' basketball also had their first game the same weekend against Algonquin and lost by nine points. And then had another game this past Friday against Marlboro and won with the final score of forty-four to twenty. And there's a chorus concert being held tomorrow night at six-thirty, and it's five dollars a cent. That's it.
That's great, thank you. My daughter will be in that one. Mr. Sullivan.
Sorry, one more before adjournment.
Yep.
Again, thank Olivia and ask the administrator on behalf of the town, you as a signee, we get her a nice letter congratulating her, thanking her for her work, if she has a portfolio, if she hits the working room, she may have a job already, I'm not sure, but...
I'm not, she still has a job here, but I'm not, we'll, we'll, we'll consider a letter at the end of our tenure here.
Oh, I thought you, I thought you were done, you said last meeting.
I graduated, but I'm not that year.
Oh, you're not, oh, oh, I thought it was all wrapped up, I apologize.
No, it's, it, it's, we're just continuing on for a little while.
In that case, can I get a scatter plot of the charts and graphs?
He doesn't, you don't report to him, no worries.
Motion or adjourn?
High and Ashy candlesticks.
Second, motion to adjourn.
This is motion by Mr. Sullivan. Second by Mr. Sigundevich, roll call vote, please.
Sullivan, aye.
Kerry Sigundevich, aye.
Paul Joseph, aye.
Jay Johnson, aye. John Marcy, aye, unanimous. Thank you, everybody, good night.
Paul, take care.
Bye, Paul, see you later.